Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to call to order the Cabarrus County Schools Board of Education Business Meeting to order. And at this time, we're going to have our presentation of colors from the junior ROTC from Jay Robinson High School. And the following cadets will perform the opening ceremony. Cadet Benjamin, Cadet Captain Benjamin Williams will command the color guard and carry the United States flag. Cadet Lieutenant Kusil Patel will carry the North Carolina flag. Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Justin McQueen and Cadet Major Taylor Bowers will guard the colors. And the cadets are instructed by Lieutenant Colonel Retired Scott Rose and Master Sergeant Retired Wayne Altrum. Can we all stand for the presentations of colors?
Freeze and colors. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Air, read, colors. Oppose. Right, face. Forward, arch.
I don't know about you, but I always enjoy watching the presentation of colors. And the junior ROTC program is a wonderful program. I did it myself back in 1972, and I tell you, it's a wonderful program. And those guys did an excellent job. Okay, board members, it's time for us to set the agenda for tonight. Do I have a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, agenda's adopted. Okay, we're going to move right on into our recognitions portion of the meeting tonight. I'd like to ask Ms. Ronnie Boone to step to the podium where she'll be doing our Impact Through Education Awards. And Ms. Boone?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, audience. Tonight, we will be recognizing for Impact Through Education Awards students and staff members from Harrisburg Elementary School and also from Mount Pleasant High School. We'll begin with Harrisburg Elementary School. And at this time, I'd like to invite any members of the administrative team from Harrisburg Elementary to come forward to stand with their students and staff. Our first honoree this evening from Harrisburg Elementary is Nolan Devos. Would Nolan and his family please come forward? Nolan is an outstanding young man. He takes it upon himself to help other students daily. If he sees that a student is, a student who's seated near him is struggling, he makes sure that the student is always on the right page and offers him his notes if they've missed something. When students choose groups for classwork, Nolan does not choose to work with his friends. Instead, he seeks out students he doesn't often have the opportunity to work with. He has great patience for students with autism and other special needs. He is well-liked by all students and is very kind to everyone. He shows compassion well beyond his years. He is a model student who maintains an A average. His behavior is impeccable. Nolan is a role model to his peers and adults alike. He not only impacts his own education, but the education of others. Congratulations, Nolan, on receiving this Impact Through Education Award for Harrisburg Elementary School. Our next honoree from Harrisburg Elementary School is Kelsey Embler. Would Kelsey and her family please come forward? Kelsey Grace Embler is a distinguished young lady striving to excel academically, socially, and with extracurricular endeavors. Her dedication to learning throughout her elementary years is evident in the stellar grades she has received and the many impressive projects she has completed in her regular and AIG classrooms. Not a year has gone by that she has not earned a spot on the A honor roll. She always goes above and beyond what is required, earning recognition with her Young Authors' Pieces for the past three years at the district level. For Kelsey, keeping her own grades up is not the only goal she sets for herself. Over the years, she's made an effort to work with students who struggle in the classroom. Most classrooms usually have at least one or two students who really need just, who just really need an extra hand and a good friend. Kelsey makes it her job to be that friend. Without a word from her teachers, Kelsey takes it upon herself to develop a caring, helpful relationship with others. She doesn't do this to impress anyone, but simply out of the kindness for those around her. Outside of school, she works just as hard to help others. When she was younger, she volunteered with her parents to help with Special Olympics activities each year. In fifth grade, she's working on a Make a Difference project to raise money for the Autism Speaks organization. Both of these efforts are in addition to the dance lessons she has taken since she was a toddler, church activities, and the soccer and softball teams that she's been a part of. Kelsey was chosen to receive this award because of the visible impact she has within the classroom. Her positive attitude and smiling face help motivate everyone around her to do their best. The way she reaches out to struggling students, gets to know them, helps them work toward a goal, and ultimately makes, makes a difference in their lives is truly inspirational. Congratulations, Kelsey, for making an impact on education at Harrisburg Elementary. Our next honoree from Harrisburg Elementary School is Ms. Stephanie Kazaya. Would Ms. Kazaya and her family please come forward? Stephanie Kazaya became the data manager at Harrisburg Elementary School in April 2009 after working as a clerical assistant at C.C. Griffin Middle School. Being selected as the Impact Through Education Award winner by her peers reflects just how vital a role Mrs. Kazaya plays in the day-to-day functioning as well as the overall success of the school. Many times, Mrs. Kazaya is the first staff member a family meets as she works with them to get new students enrolled at Harrisburg Elementary. She serves as the school's resident NCY specialist and works tirelessly with parents, teachers, and administrators to ensure that all student information and data is correct. When the front office staff is inundated with students or parents, she can often be found signing individuals in, answering the phones, or even helping with busing and transportation issues. When not at school, Mrs. Kazaya enjoys spending time with her husband Michael, son Chris, daughter Sarah, and her family's many pets. She also loves to cook, bake, travel, and organize. Harrisburg Elementary School is very fortunate to have Mrs. Kazaya to help keep us organized. Congratulations on receiving the Impact Through Education Award. And the final recipient of the Impact Through Education Award for Harrisburg Elementary School is Mrs. Angie Martin. And unfortunately, she could not be with us this evening. But before I present her award to Ms. McCall, I would like to read her biography for you so we'd all have an opportunity to hear how wonderful she is and how she was nominated for this award. What a pleasure it is to recognize Angie Martin for her outstanding accomplishments at Harrisburg Elementary and within Cabarrus County Schools. Nominated and selected by her peers, Mrs. Martin has served as the academically and intellectually gifted students at Harrisburg Elementary School for 12 years. Before that, she was a teacher at Beverly Hills, Concord Middle, and Mount Pleasant Elementary Schools for a total of more than 20 years of teaching experience. Mrs. Martin was born and raised in Mount Pleasant and has always dedicated herself to positively impacting the lives of students. She, her husband Gary, and daughter Jessie live in Harrisburg. Jessie is a student at Hickory Ridge High School. Mrs. Martin loves animals. She has one dog and four cats. She enjoys card making and running, but spending time with her family brings her the greatest joy. Throughout her career, Mrs. Martin has been recognized as a teacher leader in Cabarrus County Schools. In 2004, she was a finalist for Teacher of the Year representing Harrisburg Elementary School. And for the past two years, she has served as the teacher representative for the District Budget Committee. Mrs. Martin is a teacher leader among AIG teachers and goes out of her way to help classroom teachers prepare and deliver lessons to challenge and accelerate learning for high-achieving students. She's been instrumental in the implementation of AIG cluster grouping and math ability grouping in all grade levels at Harrisburg Elementary. Mrs. Martin coordinates Math 24 Challenge, the National Geography Bee, Knowledge Master Open, Math Olympiads, and Thinking Caps Quiz Bowl competitions. She also assists with Young Authors' Writing Competition, with the Young Authors' Writing Competition. Mrs. Martin's positive attitude is contagious. She always has a smile on her face and an uplifting comment to share which makes her students feel like they are the very best. She truly cares about everyone in the school and doing whatever she can to help students succeed. Each day, Mrs. Martin makes a tremendous impact on education at Harrisburg Elementary School. We congratulate her on receiving this award and would like to present it to Mrs. McCall and ask her to present it to Mrs. Martin with our congratulations and thanks. Now we'll begin our recognitions for the Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at Mount Pleasant High School. At this time, I'd like to invite any members of the Mount Pleasant High School administrative staff to please come forward. And our first honoree this evening from Mount Pleasant High School is Blaze Walker. Would Blaze and his family please come forward? Blaze is the son of Kevin and Janine Walker. He's a senior at Mount Pleasant High School. Although he's not your typical techie guy, Blaze has been an intricate part of, if not a driving force behind many of the technology-related programs, events, and coverage that goes on at Mount Pleasant High School. He has gone above and beyond, putting in numerous amounts of time and effort during the day to take charge of video announcements, daily webpage updates, and assisting in tutoring in class. He also puts in many hours outside of school filming and editing the video yearbook, creating and editing projects for him and others, and most recently assisted one of the school's teachers with her master's degree product, a Moodle that is used to deliver instruction. He has used that experience to work with our CTE and ECT teachers to establish their own moodles. Blaze not only does what needs to be done, he seeks out people and opportunities, presents ideas, and then gets things moving. He is, he is headed to the University of North Carolina at Charlotte in the fall, but his impact at Mount Pleasant High School will never be forgotten. Congratulations, Blaze. Our next honoree from Mount Pleasant High School is Kelly Swanson. Would Kelly and her family please come forward? Kelly is the daughter of Gary and Jerry Swanson. She is also a senior at Mount Pleasant High School. Kelly is an outstanding student who is committed to excellence. She is dedicated and willing to put in the work needed to achieve her goals. She's compassionate and shares her time and, her time and efforts generously. She's been a part of, and eventually a leader in almost every club or activity Mount Pleasant has to offer. She has captained the school's cross-country and swim teams, been a student council officer, had lead parts in the school theater productions, spearheaded, and spearheaded more fundraisers and community service projects than we have time to list this evening. If there is a task or project to be done, Kelly will probably want to take the lead, and it will not only be done, but it will be done well. Kelly has earned the respect of her fellow students and teachers through her hard work and dedication. She's, she is headed to UNC Chapel Hill in the fall, and we thank her for her tremendous impact on education at Mount Pleasant High School. Congratulations, Kelly. Our next Mount Pleasant High School honoree is Ms. Tracy Brinek. Would Ms. Brinek and her family please come forward? Tracy Brinek is the Learning Connections teacher at Mount Pleasant High School. When she first joined the school in 2004 as a lateral entry teacher, the school was just beginning a special program, and she had one certification on her license, Special Education General Curriculum. Learning Connections is a program for students with Asperger's, which is a form of autism. The students often start their time in the program staying the full day with Mrs. Brinek. That means she must teach every subject they take, which can include algebra, geometry, biology, civics, English IV, you name it. Imagine having a classroom of teenagers, all at different grade levels, all on different subjects, all with very different social and learning needs, and you have an idea of what she accomplishes day in and day out. In order to meet her students' needs, Mrs. Brinek has added eight certifications to her license, including English, Science, and Math. This means they can stay with her until they are ready to take classes with other students. In addition, her students regularly score threes and fours on their EOCs and have had higher growth scores than anyone in the school. It is amazing to see Learning Connections students grow so much during their time at Mount Pleasant High School, and that growth is a direct result of Mrs. Brinek's hard work and dedication. Thank you for all that you do, and congratulations on making an impact on education. And our final Impact Through Education Award recipient from Mount Pleasant High School this evening is Karen Rollins. Would Ms. Rollins and her family please come forward? Karen Rollins is a treasurer at Mount Pleasant High School, a position she's held since 2006. Despite the fact that treasurer is her official title, Mrs. Rollins wears many hats. In fact, the school completed a recent job description study, when the school completed a recent job description study, they were very clearly reminded that the treasurer's role, specifically Mrs. Rollins' role, is so much more than field trip money. She spends her days taking in money, sending out money, completing purchase orders, satisfying bills and receipts, and keeping the books balanced. She tracks timekeeper, payroll, mail, vendors, substitutes, answers phones, and gives refunds when the honey buns get stuck in the vending machine. She trains the rookie teachers in all the procedures they need to learn and re-trains all the veteran teachers in what they always forget. She does it all with a smile and never makes anyone feel like she has anything else to do other than take care of their questions. For making everyone feel special and for her patience under fire, Cabarrus County Schools salutes you and thanks you for making an impact through education at Mount Pleasant High School. Congratulations.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I want to congratulate all of you once again and thank you all, you know, for your impact through education. And we have one more recognition under our agenda tonight, 4.02. I'd like to ask Ms. Kathy Auger to take Dr. Shepherd's place this evening as he's running a little bit late. And I'd like to ask Mr. Tim Vaughn to come forward from Hillbush Ford to do the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month Award.
Mr. Chairman and board members, each month, thanks to the generosity of our friends at Hillbush Ford, we honor an outstanding Cabarrus County Schools teacher. Tim, on behalf of Cabarrus County Schools, we're so grateful for the support and recognition that Hillbush Ford provides for our teachers. We thank you for being such a wonderful partner. Tonight, I'm pleased to announce that the Cabarrus County Schools Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for March is Stephen Bradley. Mr. Bradley, would you, your family, and any members of your school's administrative team please come forward?
Stephen is a fifth-grade teacher at Bethel Elementary School. He was nominated for this month's award by a parent who wrote, "When I first met Mr. Bradley, I immediately sensed he was a caring and devoted teacher. Mr. Bradley wants the best for all of his students and provides a nurturing learning environment to ensure success. The times that I've been in the classroom to volunteer, I could tell from the students' faces that they enjoy school, respect him, and appreciate his desire to make learning fun." The parent added, "My daughter is in Mr. Bradley's class, and she has struggled since third grade, but Mr. Bradley has gone above and beyond to ensure that her needs are met. My daughter's comfortable asking questions in class now, something she wasn't comfortable doing before. For me, watching her sense of pride in her achievements blossom this year has been indescribable. Mr. Bradley deserves a huge round of applause. He's an exceptional teacher and should be recognized for his unwavering commitment to his students' success. I hope my other children are fortunate enough to have Mr. Bradley as their teacher. Every student deserves a Mr. Bradley." And Mr. Bradley, on behalf-
And Mr. Bradley, on behalf of Cabarrus County Schools, I want to thank you for your outstanding work in the classroom. And Mr. Vaughn has a couple of items for you. And the board, shake your hands.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much, Mr. Vaughn, for coming up from Hillbush and making this presentation for us each month. And you guys might want to go buy you a new Ford someday, and if you do, Tim's the man to go see up there. But anyway, those of you that were recognized tonight, and if you are ready to leave, you can, and just slip on out. The rest of the meeting's going to continue right on. And so, at this time, board members, we're going to look at 5.1, the approval of the minutes from our February 6th and February 13th board meetings. Do I have a motion that we approve these meetings, minutes? Have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, the motion carries. All right, we're going to move right on into the reports section tonight. 6.1 is the board chair comments. I have no comments this evening. 6.2 is superintendent's comments, and Dr. Colleen Sane will be filling in for Dr. Shepherd for his comments. Dr. Sane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are a few items that Dr. Shepherd wanted to highlight this evening. The first is, we wanted to share with our audience and the viewing public that we have created and produced an informative video that outlines several of the operational efficiencies that have produced significant savings for the school system. The video is available on YouTube via a link from the CCS website. I encourage the public to take a look at the video. In addition, March is Youth Art Month, and as you may have noticed, we're celebrating the importance of art education and the artistic talents of our students. Artwork from our students is on display in the education center lobby now through the end of the month. Board members, I would encourage you to take a few minutes to view the wonderful display of talent. To our viewing public, you are invited to come view our student art gallery anytime during normal business hours. And last week, we celebrated School Social Workers Week. Our social workers bring unique knowledge and skills to our school system. They are instrumental in enhancing our school district's ability to meet our academic mission, especially the home-school and community collaboration that is integral to the success of our mission. School social workers serve as the vital link between home, school, and community. We really appreciate all that they do. Also, last week was National School Breakfast Week. This year's theme was School Breakfast: Go for the Gold. And our cafeterias serve special menus to help students warm up their brains before heading to class. We so appreciate the child nutrition staff and salute their efforts in helping our students understand the importance of eating a healthy breakfast. Also, some of our middle school students had a wonderful opportunity last week to spend time with the state superintendent, June Atkinson, as part of the Schools at Work, Students at Work Initiative. Dr. Atkinson spoke to students at the Charlotte Motor Speedway about work and about how important it is to choose the career path that interests you. I also, Cabarrus County Schools, would like to extend congratulations to Pitt School Road Elementary School. This school is a recipient of a $10,000 life improvement project grant from IKEA, the Swedish furniture company. The grant will be used to fund book purchases for the library, and the school will receive new furniture for the library courtesy of IKEA. And we have a few calendar items that are important. March 23rd is early dismissal day for elementary school students. March 26th is the teacher work day, and I happen to know we'll be focusing on technology and Common Core, so our teachers will be really busy that day. Teacher-student transfer application window opened on March 1st and continues through June 1st. And kindergarten registration will be held April 2nd through April 6th at all CCS elementary schools. And finally, our thoughts and prayers are with the families that were affected last week by the tornado that touched down in Harrisburg. Several CCS families were affected by this natural disaster, and our schools and community have stepped up to assist these families in need. We thank them for their support and pray that our families recover quickly. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Sane, for that wonderful report. Board members, we need to move on now to our guest speaker section. And for the, for our viewing audience, I wanted to read the following. The guest speakers may be scheduled on the agenda of the board's business meeting by calling the board clerk by 12 o'clock noon on the Friday prior to the meeting. Individuals addressing the board will be allowed up to three minutes, and groups will be allowed up to five minutes to make their presentation. The Board of Education would like to thank our guests for their interest in addressing the board and also for their cooperation in presenting information within the timeframe allotted. The following guest speakers have requested to address the board tonight, and they will have Ms. Nora Standish present. Okay, if you're present, Nora, you come on up. And as you noticed, there'll be a little clock to your left there, and you've got three minutes, and when you start, the clock will start. And when it gets, turns a little bit yellow up there on you, that means you've got 20 seconds, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hope you guys can excuse my attire, I just came from work. I'm Nora Standish, I'm a junior at Northwest High School. I go to JM as well, and I take a class through NC BPS. I take classes at various schools because I want to take AP classes to challenge myself, which I enjoy the experience of being around a different economic class at JM and different people and different demographics. But I also don't enjoy spending the money for gas and having to travel because I spend my lunch driving, which I don't like eating and driving, it's not my favorite thing. So I came up with an idea that I think might, would be beneficial to every student taking AP classes. In a county in Winston-Salem, they have what they call a career center, which is where every AP class is located. I was, in my head how I see it, is that you could take a lower-populated elementary school and disperse those students to other elementary schools and have that be our AP center, more or less. And people who have a heavy load of AP classes could go to that school as their main school, and it could offer simple classes such as honors English IV as well, so that that would cut down on traveling expenses, so that they could stay at that school all day. It also wouldn't have to eliminate the high schools offering AP classes. For students who are taking just one AP class, the high school could still offer basic APs so that we can still cut down on expenses in terms of bus, gas, and such. And most people who take AP classes are upper level, upperclassmen, juniors and seniors, so they would probably drive anyway, so that wouldn't be as expensive. If you guys have any questions, I'm open to try and answer them.
Okay, board members, do you have any questions you'd like to ask Ms. Standish? I didn't figure you would, because, you know, it's a good idea, and we thank you for coming. It takes courage to come before a board, especially if you've never done it before. And so, we thank you, Nora, for coming tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to ask Mr. Van Huculam if he would just look into what the process is. I know he's evaluating some other AP scenarios right now, that may be something just to look at for the future.
Okay, we're always open to good ideas. Okay, board members, we need to look to 8.1, the approval of the March 12th consent agenda. These are items that we discussed last week in our work session. And you know what we have here, the approval of the budget amendments and also the bid awards for IT improvements. And do I have a motion that we accept the consent agenda as written?
Same.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. All right, now we're going to move on to our action agenda, and we'd like to have Mr. Whitkey to come to the podium. He's going to talk with us about the QSCB Round Two funding request for multiple projects at various schools. Mr. Whitkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to take a moment to get to the right location here.
Board members, I'll give you a little heads up for Mr. Whitkey. This might be part of his presentation, but I just wanted you all to know that we did meet with the county manager and the chairman of the commission board last week, and we mentioned the QSCB projects to them. And I must be totally honest with you, I don't know how Mr. Whitkey, the rest of the ones present, felt, but I went away from there feeling like that there's not going to be much hope for us to get the QSCB Round Two funding. And, but Mr. Whitkey may can elaborate on that a little bit more, but I don't want to see us spend an awful lot of time on this, simply because I think that it may not be a request that we're going to get granted. But, Mr. Whitkey, if you'll carry forward now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just direct your attention to the third attachment, which is a list, if you will, of the projects that we've recommended for this particular opportunity. And as you're locating that document, I'll simply say that these funds are still part of the original QSCB funds, but they were reverted by counties that did not use them. And so, there's about $12.5 million or so available through the same process as QSCB as the one that we're applying and using in projects today. We've had good success with the projects, and I think we've also developed a good rapport with DPI's staff. And so, if there were an opportunity to apply for these funds, I certainly think we'd have as good an opportunity as anyone to get approval and get the money for them. The biggest, or the first 13 projects represent technology improvements to schools. And I guess that's where we initially started with this project, with Dr. Probst helping us put those projects, project lists together. And that sort of prompted some discussions about other opportunities. And we've talked a number of times with the DPI staff about how much money, if we were given the opportunity, how much money should we ask for? And they simply said, "Ask for as much as you need," meaning, you know, that they would consider any and all requests. So we therefore put together a total request of almost $12 million, because frankly, we need that and more for the projects that are at hand. So I think technology is clearly the biggest part of this. We also put in there, as you will see, kind of midway down, is a land purchase for a new elementary school. That is certainly to be needed in the next few years. And then, we started to indicate projects that were sort of either extremely needed or possibly had been in the original QSCB projects, but because of funding shortages in other projects, sort of got put to the back of the list. And so, we included them here. And the only requirements in looking at those was that DPI would certainly do that, but they asked that they not include additional design fees. And that made sense, because in theory, we've had those projects designed and expended those funds already. And so, we extracted the design fee portion of those projects out. But along with all the other projects, there are also some energy conservation projects, which we always seem to have a hard time finding money for, but clearly payback very, very quickly. And then, some additional mechanical projects that are needed at many of the schools. Like any of the projects that we've already been funded for under QSCB, all of this work is needed. I think that the wonderful thing about this is extremely low interest rate that we can obtain in terms of taking the loans. But clearly, in addition to your approval, we have to have the county commissioner's approval as well. I've put together a resolution, which is a requirement by DPI, and so that's available for your review. These are, the applications are due the 16th of this month, so it would probably require, unfortunately, a special session or at least a gathering of a quorum of the commissioners to approve this document if you all were in agreement to go forward with it. But that said, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, board members, if you have any questions, we'd like to give you that time at this time. And Ms. Monnet, you have any questions you'd like to ask?
I'd just like you to elaborate a little bit for us on what the reasoning was that gave you the idea or the impression that none of this, at any level, would be available.
Absolutely. It seems to me like, and Mr. Whitkey, you wasn't there, Mr. Kiger was with me, and also Dr. Shepherd. And it seems to be, and has been for some time, the main focus of the commissioners is that they're concerned about the $17 million deficit, leaving the tax rate the same as it is, 63 cents. And, you know, if they leave it at the same with the deficit and the revaluation, it cut it like $17.9 million to make up that. And the impression that they gave us was that, you know, there wasn't but two commissioners there, you know, of course, the chair and the vice chair, and the comments that was made, they know that we need these things, they know that we have the need, but the very quote that was given to me was, "I don't think you have three votes to support that" for the asking the DPI to give us these funds, because, see, these funds still have to be paid back. It's not like they've given us a gift or anything. The QSCB One monies have to be repaid as well, but the interest rate, nobody can borrow money that's cheap. Ms. Dubois was there, and I'm, you know, stand to be corrected, but I think she told me that the interest on just the monies that we've already received is like $5,000 a year. And so, this would be about the same if we were awarded all of this money that we have a resolution prepared for tonight. But the indication that I get is that, you know, there just won't be any additional funding for anything, because obviously, this has to be paid back. Ms. Blackwater, she's worked with the commission before as the former chair, and maybe Ms. Blackwater may want to make a couple of comments in reference to this. If you do, fine. If not...
I'm good.
Okay, well, she'll just go whenever she gets to her turn. But I hope that answered some of your questions, Ms. Monnet, but they're focused on the tax rate and the budget at this time, and so they're not wanting really to entertain increases in the budget, because they're trying to find money for the deficit that we already have, leaving the tax rate the same. And Mr. Kiger, like I say, he was with me, and we're coming up the line, and when it gets your turn, you can add or take away from whatever I said.
A follow-up question. Are we obligated, if we were to go ahead and send this in and present it, and were awarded funds, are we obligated then to take them? In other words, if they're sort of in limbo, the county commission is in limbo, and it could be that things will look differently to them when they have made their decisions. So are we obligated to take this money if we send these projects in, or is that a futile effort?
I think that would be an obligation on our part, simply because we would be taking funds that other districts could have received had we not put our bid in for it.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a comment on that now, since we're getting a little further into it. But the reason is the timeframe, you know, we actually have to have a combined board meeting for both boards to agree to move forward with it. That's step one, just like we did with the initial QC, or QSCB. So that's a problem. And Leigh, I wanted to ask you, was that an issue? Was the timeframe that we should have been doing this prior to, you know, this March 16th day, I'm sure probably threw them a little bit of a curve to try to pull together a special board meeting?
Well, actually, it was mentioned, Dr. Shepherd had mentioned that. We knew it was the 15th or the 16th, and so that definitely had an impact on it, because, I mean, the day's the 12th and what, the 16th, what, Thursday? So I didn't see no way that we could move on it that fast, and I don't think the chairman either could either. But that really was not the real issue, though. The real issue was, you know, being able to acquire additional funds.
I'll reserve my questions just as you come down the line.
Ms. Monnet, you all ready now? Okay, Ms. Carpenter?
Now, with these funds, can you purchase actual equipment? I mean, can you purchase things? Well, I mean, a chiller, I see that. But I know something that was balled up, and the reason I'm asking, this is something that Ms. Furtinball had balled up before, and we keep talking about technology, technology, how far we're behind with this, and something that had been balled up at one of our, well, maybe two meetings ago, we talked about how Kindles have come down, and I was just reading where $10 million was put in by CMS, I mean, Charlotte Meckenberg System, and how they talked about they were going to bring this on. And we've read over and over how, you know, different school systems, Mooresville, I was just reading what it did with laptops with them. And, you know, we were talking about textbooks, how that, those funds have been depleted. And, you know, we were talking about Kindles, we could put, you know, maybe books onto Kindles, and maybe that would be... and maybe that would be less expensive than buying textbooks. And possibly, that would be, it could be twofold, maybe less expensive to put textbooks onto Kindles. It could be, a child wouldn't have to carry so much, you know, there's a lot of different advantages to this. Could this type thing, could this be something we could use for these funds to buy so many of these Kindles? This is just a question I'm asking. This might could be a start for us to do something, or maybe start to buy X amount of laptops, you know, for, say, so many classrooms. This is just a question I'm asking. You know, we keep screaming, "We need technology, we need technology." You know, I look at this, would this be, you know, we're looking at half a million dollars here to replace tennis courts in a parking lot. You know, we're screaming, "Technology is where we need to be." Are we, technology is that above a tennis court and a parking lot for a half a million dollars?
It's a good question, Ms. Carpenter. If you recall, the basis of the stimulus money was, in fact, to stimulate construction. And so if you look at the guidelines within the DPI and the federal regulations applying to this funding source, you'll find that you can buy equipment, but it must be tied to a building program. So in other words, the one example we talked of, I think at the last meeting, was that we were looking at buying some of the furniture that would go with the new lobby area and secure spaces within the offices at Central Cabarrus High School. As long as the furniture is part of and necessary to the program or the use of that space, it can be purchased that way. But an outright purchase of equipment only is not permitted.
Okay.
Because it wouldn't be meeting the needs or the goals of the program.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Kiger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I would just like to tell Ms. Carpenter, I am in one hundred percent agreement that what a great day that would be, and textbooks on Kindles for kids walking around. And I'll share a brief little aside. My daughter's currently doing, is homebound and taking one North Carolina Virtual Public School course, and it's an English, so she had to write a paper. She asked me for an idea, and that's the idea I told her to write on, write about giving kids Kindles. And the comment that she got back from her instructor said, "Great idea, loved your paper. My two high school daughters loved your idea, too." So, anyway, there's support out there. I'm just, I'm here to tell you, there's support out there for you. Yeah, there you go. But back to the question at hand, which is the construction projects that we have in front of us. And I guess there's two things, I'd like to ask the same question that Ms. Minnet asked, because quite frankly, I don't know the answer to the second question that she asked on what our obligation then becomes. But I did want to comment on the meeting that the chairman and I were attended, and it just literally, because of the timeframe and because of where they are in their budget process, the appetite was just not there to sell the bonds necessary or go through the effort to do what we need done on their part to take care of what we would like to have. So I don't have any question that the need is here, it just doesn't seem like it's going anywhere. But to me, that doesn't change what our obligation is. I said last week, it was the same conversation. I think if it's a need that we have, we pursue and ask the question. If the answer's no, then the answer's no. But on our part, we need to decide as a board whether this is something we want to ask or want to pursue if we can, pending the outcome of the question on what our obligations are. But in just a brief, on your list, if you go down, if you just put the technology piece on it, for some reason, I thought I had seen a total for that, and now I can't find it. But do you, is there a total dollar amount for just the technology piece? I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I thought I had it, now I couldn't find it.
I think initially, it was around five million, but we've made some adjustments and changes, and it's come down from that. So I'm going to estimate it at about four million, right off the top.
Technology was around...
Oh, one point two million.
Okay. So just the technology piece? All right. Which, you know, again, of the twelve total, that certainly seems worth asking for, in my opinion. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll listen to maybe what the more experienced board members have to say with regards to what our obligation would be or whether this is worth pursuing.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger. Ms. Blackwater?
Actually, I have a couple of statements and a couple of questions, and I hate to throw Dr. Probst and Kelly Clutz a little curve tonight, but, you know, you never know where this conversation's going to go till you get here. First of all, and I know you won't know this off the top of your head, but I would like to know what the difference of the debt service between the school projects are and the county projects. Okay? And I know you don't know that. But we get hit hard that the majority of debt service is school-related, and I know a good majority of that is, but of course, it's not the full picture. So I would like to know what that picture looks like. I also know that we pay, all of our lottery funds or the basis of our lottery funds go to pay our debt service, correct? All of it. Okay. So when people ask us, and we get asked a lot, because all these commercials are on television about lottery funds do all these wonderful, great things for systems, and I'm sure it does, but our agreement was for all of our monies to be placed out of the lottery funds to debt service. So we're paying, you know, a good portion of our own debt service out of the lottery funds that our school doesn't receive, or our system doesn't receive, to do something else with it. The other thing, you know, I was looking at this list, and I thought, these projects have to be done at some point in time. I mean, you know, it's either pay me now or pay me later. Right now, the interest rate with QSCB projects, you know, they may never see that, as we said this with the first round, you're going to never see that interest rate again. So, you know, and also to be able to include projects that are going to benefit them directly, land purchase, making one of the schools a shelter, that was a huge topic of discussion for many years. So there's a lot of things that will benefit our community as a whole by doing this list as well. And again, you know, here we are back at, you know, I've had several questions of, "Well, why did y'all not have this in your very first round?" Well, we were given amount of money, and we had two boards, you know, that agreed on the projects, which was three, four, or five years ago, and things look a whole lot differently five years later, not just in the projects themselves, but the numbers for sure. So, you know, I hate that the timeframe, you know, has kind of got us behind, because I wish we were talking about this two months ago. I really hate that both boards have never met since the initial meeting that we agreed upon the projects and did the initial contract. I think if they had been more on board, and I'm not blaming either side, but if we had had more combined updated meetings or informational meetings, they may have understood, you know, why things happened, why they did. You know, there was a huge issue that those bonds didn't get sold for what, almost a year after we did the contracts on them? So that put us really far behind. So there's a lot of issues with this that I think would benefit both sides by doing this Round Two. You know, projects that they're going to have to do later on down the road, that's going to cost them a lot more money than it would cost right now. So is that to the taxpayers' benefits, that we, you know, actually incur this expense now? And we are paying a good majority of our debt service, it's not coming completely from, you know, the taxpayers' pockets? So I really would like to have some information. You know, how much above that lottery funds is our debt service that they actually pay out of their pocket? I think that's real important. And what is the debt service that's not ours? You know, it appears that we always get hit that every debt service that's, you know, within the county is school-related. So if you could provide those, that would be great. We're not going to meet this unless we decide to as a board anyway this deadline, but I think this would be good information in case that, just like now, they may come back and give us another deadline, because we didn't know this one was coming. You know, that if we could apply for it later on, we'd be more prepared. Thank you.
One thing, if I could just mention, I know there's been some concern about, you know, the deadline. We didn't get the information to, at least, it was February first, that's the information date. I'm not even sure exactly when we all received it, but it was probably shortly thereafter. But the DPI did not allow us a great deal of time. We're doing this as pretty much as quickly as we can, but...
And that's why I'm saying, you know, that, we always don't get told ahead of time, and that's really important, because they think we've been sitting over here with this information in our back pocket, and that's not true. You know, we need to have these board meetings, and my thought was, had we been having some updated combined board meetings between the two of us, you know, this might have been done a little bit more cohesively anyway. But since we've not even had an updated meeting between the two boards ever since the conception of the first round of QSCB, I just think we've missed an opportunity to educate both sides. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blackwater. Ms. Furtinbaugh, if you want to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to take a little bit of a different approach. I did see that memo, I don't know, I probably saw it a few people downstream, but I believe it actually didn't come out until around the fifteenth of February, because I'm fairly certain we were already past our second meeting, or it was the day of our second meeting in February when it came out. So just from that point. But I would suggest that it is always worth asking. I don't think we ever bypass an opportunity. It was two of our board members meeting with two of the commission board members. We have seven, they have five. I think we give a fair opportunity for us to express our needs. And if you all think about how many times we've been asked by DPI, by NCSBA, to quantify what our needs are. If we don't quantify, they will never know. So, and again, this is just touching on it. However, I also want to balance that with sounding like we're greedy. There's only twelve million plus in the pot from the entire state. I don't think we fill our list. I think we say, "What is our top priority?" When I looked down this list last week, we had talked about the middle school technology. My suggestion is, we take the first three off the list here. We add in the boiler for, I think, Mount Pleasant High School, the something at Coltrane Web here, the kitchen hood. I think we add in some of those critical things. And I think we put in, for example, the two Concord High School programs, the vocational buildings is basically out of the QSCB, or will be, I think, what we already have, because we ran out of money. I think that deserves to go back in. I think the fire academy has been, it really should almost be lumped with that CTE program, because it's a CTE program, too. It's just identified separately there. I don't think, even though it would be commendable, I think we take out all of the energy, anything with parking lot, because to me, it would be hard to justify anything that says parking lot anyways, because this is really supposed to be curriculum-based money and construction. You know, those two kind of requirements were the theme of the QSCB money. So my suggestion is that we pull out these couple highlight items, it will come out to between two and three million, and we shorten the list. Like I said, don't sound like we're greedy, but I think that might be a little more palatable to the commissioners. And if we show them something that is, if you will, more the higher needs, I don't want to say something is less important than the other, but, and we proceed, we make the request. The answer can only be no. We're used to getting no. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Furtinbaugh. Mr. Fur.
Yes, once again, I'd like to echo the rest of you board members' remarks. You know, you learn more every time you come to the meetings. I appreciate it highly, and send in the rest of you for your hard work and really researching these things, that some of us in the audience, I'm sure, we don't know all the details or some of the other stuff. But, you know, you've got two separate boards, you know, they've got their responsibilities, we have our responsibilities. We don't want to harm them, they don't want to harm us in any way. We have to work together. I agree with Ms. Furtinbaugh that we maybe need to scale back a little bit and go after it like that, but we would, to me, we'd be doing an injustice to our kids in the school system not to at least ask.
Thank you, Mr. Fur, and thank all of you board members for your comments, well-thought-out suggestions there, whatever. And for my comments, I'm feeling like the only real drawback, well, actually, there's two drawbacks. The number one drawback, obviously, is the deadline for March the sixteenth. And so with this being the twelfth, if we approved either this resolution tonight and got it to the commission, they'd have to have an emergency call meeting in order to do this. And so with that being said, I think that we're probably, it's probably a moot point for that part. But as far as asking for it, we can ask for it, but I don't know what good that's going to be, though, if the deadline has already passed. So that leaves us at the question, you know, what does the board prefer? Do you want to receive this resolution, make a motion to receive this resolution scaled back to limit it to two, two and a half million dollars, let Mr. Wiki work that up on the list, and Ms. Furtinbaugh can get with him? And also, maybe Ms. Probst, the technology director there, can be involved in that, and cut it back to two, two and a half million, something like that. But then again, though, I think the primary thing, though, is the deadline on the time limit, so. But, Mr. Wiki, would you like to add anything else to this, you know, about, because, you know, you know the, pretty much the mood of the county? And like I say, I want to say this before you start there, and as I fully understand the situation the county's in, you know, they say the economy's coming around, and Ms. Clutz said, you know, for North Carolina, we're a hundred and forty-five million dollars up in revenue for the first quarter, and so that's a good sign. Unemployment seems to be going down, and there's more jobs, that kind of thing. But none of that's going to come to our rescue for the budget that we're talking about and for what we're talking about here. And so, but anyway, Mr. Wiki, you'd like to say a few other things about this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I think the projects are all important, and clearly, you know, IT is, technology is extremely important to all of our schools. I'd hate to see us lose the opportunity to at least ask. I mentioned to Dr. Shepherd, I have no problem, I'll drive this to Raleigh myself, if we can get the signatures on the line. I don't know, but I would ask Consul if a called meeting by telephone is adequate for the commissioners to secure their votes.
That's actually going to be something their attorney's going to have to advise them on, so I'm not comfortable trying to give legal advice to what their attorney is telling. And it's going to probably be governed by their own policies in terms of whether they can do a telephonic meeting. I'm just not sure. We, I know we have some former commissioners here that may have more experience with that, but I'm always reluctant to give an opinion on someone else's board and their rules.
Well, ours, we used to, well, they could have changed our policy since I was on the board. So I know we used to, we used to vote with ours, but, see, I've been off of it for a while. I've been off five years, so Grace was the last one was on it, so I don't know.
Never did it when I was on the board.
So I don't know. So they could have changed it since I was on. But can I make a comment? Because I agree with Cindy, in one aspect, I would like to see the projects that were left off, like the weight room, the other things that were put off. And I'm with you, I think that maybe instead of asking for all the money, I don't want us to be greedy, but the only other thing, and the technology to be put on, and the only other thing that I would like to see that we did, which I think would be something that would be beneficial to all of the county, would be that the emergency generator for, to allow schools to function as an emergency relief shelter during an area crisis, because that part of the county has not been covered. And that would be beneficial for everyone, because we did put the other, isn't it out at, where's the other generator? It's at Cox Mill, which we've got that part of the county covered, and so to me, that would be beneficial to everyone. So I would like to see that remain in there. But I would like to see that, I think it would make it more palatable, palatable for everyone. Can't get my tongue working tonight. But I think that may be, and maybe make it more that we would get it, instead of asking for the whole thing, even though that's, we know it is necessary, that we do need all those things. But to see that we get it, if we go there with, I mean, for us, is it, there's only twelve million dollars available, right? Is that correct?
It's about twelve point five million.
And so we're going there asking for the whole thing, and so what I'm saying, our chances of getting, if we cut it down, our chances of maybe getting what we, that whole amount, I think would be better. So that's why I'm saying, put technology in, then those, definitely those things that were left off the other. I agree with Cindy and Tim with that.
Mr. Chairman, may I start to make a modification to the motion here?
Before you do that, can we ask a couple of other questions?
Yeah, well, let me move forward, just with Dr. Shepherd, he hadn't had a chance to comment, and he was at the meeting with me last Thursday. So, Dr. Shepherd, I'd like for you to make a few comments, if you will.
Just to reiterate what Mr. Kiger said a moment ago about the situation of the budget, we are very concerned about what they're getting from their revaluation and the fact that they're not going to have the funds they originally thought. But I would like to, on a different vein, also report something, it was said in the meeting, that the small amount, the one point eight million that we took to them, to the commissioners for their consideration or to that meeting, Ms. Dubois commented that that would not be worth the administrative cost of applying for these loans, such a small amount. So actually, the larger amount would be more attractive, she said, because there is evidently a fixed amount of administrative fees for the county... a fixed amount of administrative fees for the county that they have to take on. So I did speak with the county manager today. There is not a meeting planned between now and then, and he did not see that there would be an opportunity for a called meeting, but I would be more than willing to make the call back tomorrow morning to say, how can we work through this, if possible? It's certainly my recommendation that we approve the larger list, as we've said and you've said a couple of times, all they can say is no. I think you might have said this, Mr. Wiki, before I entered the room, but the state has certainly encouraged us not to hold back in terms of what we're requesting. We've evidently got a good track record with them, and they're interested in us moving forward and requesting for all that we can. So my feelings would be to approve the list as recommended and make the contact, I'll make the contact with the county manager, we'll see what we can do, and I'll go with you to drive it to Raleigh in hand delivery.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. And what I'd like to do at this time, board members, is I'd like to read the resolution. All of you have it there in your attachment.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have one question that I still haven't had clarified. If we send this request to Raleigh, do we have to have the okay of the commission before it goes to Raleigh? That has to happen. That answers my question.
Thank you, Ms. Monnet. That was a good question, but that was part of my original opening remark was, we had to have their blessing on it, which honestly, like I said, I don't want to be redundant, you know, but there's no problem in asking. So what I want to do, if you've got your monitor turned on there, I'm going to read this, and then we can make the changes as we see fit, or we can take Dr. Shepherd's suggestion and leave it just like it is and apply for it and see what happens and go from there. But the resolution reads, Cabarrus County Board of Education, resolution approving the application for qualified school construction bonds reallocation round, this is, in other words, the second round, March 12, 2012, whereas the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009, Public Law 111-5, established qualified construction, school construction bonds, QSCB, an interest-free debt instrument for use by local education agencies, and whereas QSCB proceeds may be used for new building construction, land acquisition, or the renovation or rehabilitation of older buildings. And whereas the federal government has allocated a portion of the QSCB to the state of North Carolina in the amount of $275,772,000, and whereas the North Carolina Board of Education and the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction have reallocated approximately $12,530,150 in reverted funds to counties via the QSCB funding program. And whereas, the, I lost my place there. Whereas the North Carolina Board of Education and the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction have allocated $11,582,340 of the QSCB fund to the Cabarrus County Board of Education. That's the part that we've already got. All right, and then we move on. Whereas the Cabarrus County Board of Education has immediate capital needs which qualify for the use of QSCB funds, a list of which is attached heretofore as Exhibit A and incorporated herein, whereas the application deadline to become eligible for the QSCB funds is March the 16th, 2012. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Cabarrus County Board of Education as follows, that the projects listed in Exhibit A are eligible to be paid for with QSCB reallocated funding, that the board chair, superintendent, and legal counsel are authorized to take any and all action necessary to qualify for QSCB funding, including submission of the requisite eligibility application for additional QSCB funds to the State Board of Education and Department of Public Instruction by March the 16th, 2012, approved by the Cabarrus County Board of Education this 12th day of March, 2012. And Dr. Shepherd and myself will sign this. And so, board members, as you see, we have it, we're asking for Exhibit A, which is 12,000, I mean, 12 million dollars. And my question to the board is, do I have such a motion that we approve this resolution with the understanding that Dr. Shepherd and myself sign it, Mr. Wiki gets it to the county, I guess the county manager's office, Dr. Shepherd calls and see if we can get a meeting with them and get it delivered to meet the deadline? So do I have a motion to accept this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that the QSCB Round Two funding request for projects at multiple schools, associated resolution, submission of the application to the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners and NCSBI, be approved with the following modifications to Exhibit A. That as a priority at the top of the list, we add back in all projects which were eliminated from Round One, including what is likely to happen at the end of this meeting, the vote to remove the money for the Northwest Fields. So all projects be put into the top of the list. That we remove all of the references to tennis courts and paving, and that the land purchase be placed at the end. I believe that removing the tennis courts and paving and the land purchase at the end will balance out with putting the priority from the first QSCB on top. So with those modifications, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, board members, you've heard the motion with the modifications, and I think that will come up considerably less than the 12 million that we're asking for, I believe. Obviously, no way to add all of that up at this point, but I like the motion myself. And so, board members, are we clear on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Kiger, you have a comment?
No, that's okay.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second, and we're going to approve this resolution as with the additions that Ms. Furtinbaugh has suggested, and I agree that I think that's a great idea to put back the things that we took out, didn't have funding for, and put back the things, the monies that we're going to have to use for the other projects. So we've got a motion, we've got a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Are there any who want to oppose? Ms. Monroe, the motion carries, seven, zero. Thank you. Okay, board members, we can move on now. Thank you, Mr. Wiki, I think you're still up, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, we're going to move now to nine point two on the action agenda, and this will be Mr. Wiki also, and you can do nine point three while you're there also, Mr. Wiki. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think what, I'll basically just read you the request, because it sort of explains what we're talking about. We were bidding three projects, first of all, I should explain that. There was the HVAC improvements for Central Cabarrus High School, Mount Pleasant Elementary School, and also Mount Pleasant Middle School. And at Mount Pleasant Middle School, we were simply replacing a cooling tower. The way the bids came in, we did get very good bids. There were, as you see from the bid tab that's attached, there was a lot of bidding, and there's quite a few alternates taken because of the nature of the equipment requests that we had. But we did have one firm, standout Catawba Mechanical, they are at a total cost for the two projects, the two main projects, which are the high school and the elementary school. And those two projects were total cost of $1,310,700. Combined, that was low or under budget by $20,880. The price, however, that they had for the cooling tower, we felt was higher than it should be. And because we're taking the combined bid to get the lowest price for the two larger projects, we had to make a decision one way or the other. And so our decision was not to go forward, and our recommendation to you is not to go forward with the cooling tower project. You may recall that there was a bubble on the blister, as it was called, on the side of the cooling tower last year that had all of us a little nervous. We've since patched that. We spent the money, you know, with our own funds and did that repair, and it seems to be holding. And as we get into the capital budget issues on that particular school, you may recall there's some major decisions that have to be made about its future. And I guess at this point in time, with the higher price coming in on that particular item, and the need to make some long-range decisions for the school, we'd prefer to not recommend going forward with the cooling tower replacement. If all things go terrible and we have to make a major replacement, we believe we could replace the unit for about half the cost of what the bids were today, or last week, rather. So our recommendation is, let's continue on with the two projects that we have the solid bids for. Let's keep the cooling tower off to the side, and I'll explain a little bit later this evening what we're going to recommend using the monies for.
Okay, Mr. Wiki, there you have it, board members. We have any questions for Ms. Wiki? If you do, we'll start, Mr. Fur, your side, work our way around. If you have questions, if you don't, just pass it right on in.
No questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Furtinbaugh.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to confirm with our council that I believe we never have an obligation to accept a bid, even if the bids are open, right?
That is correct. At our discretion, we can decide not to proceed with the work if we don't like the bid numbers.
Okay, Ms. Blackwell. Okay, Mr. Kiger. Ms. Carpenter. Ms. Monnet. Okay, well, that makes it a lot easier when you guys are all in agreements there. So what we need now is, we need a motion to accept the bid tabulation for Central Cabarrus and Mount Pleasant Elementary School, the HVAC bid. And so do I have a motion to approve this?
No moves.
I have motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, just as clarification, that's not the way the motion reads on the agenda.
Well, I took it just right off of here. I can read, I could read the whole motion, but I just took it off of the agenda.
Because we usually have to state the dollar amount in the bid acceptance, too, I believe.
Okay, well, I can do that. You just want me to read all that, don't you?
Well, and this also, you said for two schools, the motion in the agenda only says for one school, so I just want to be clear.
Yeah, well, that's true. I appreciate, you know, you bringing it to my attention. So I'll read the motion as it is here. It's that the Central Cabarrus High School HVAC contract could be awarded to Catawba Mechanical, including the base bids and the identified alternate bids in the amount of $1,310,700. Now, is that correct, Mr. Wiki?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, I had a motion and I had a second, and we voted on it. Do I need to do anything else?
Actually, we didn't vote. Ms. Furtinbaugh made her comment before we voted, so.
I thought we did, but anyway, if we need to vote again, Mr. Ricky.
I suggest you vote again for clarity.
But we have the motion in the second, though, already.
Should we?
Okay, so who made the motion?
I did.
Blake made the motion, and Carolyn seconded. Oh, Grace did.
Grace.
Grace seconded. Just make sure, make sure the clerks got it correct. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Do I have, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, now the motion carries. All right, now we'll move on to the Northwest, well, that's all we have. I've got to go back to the other one, don't I? Or am I through with that now?
That was all we required.
Yeah, that's it, right here. I've got it right here. I'm trying to get ahead of myself there. Okay, Mr. Wiki, now we'll do the Northwest Gym, High School Gymnasium addition there, so talk to us a little bit about that.
We'll do, sir. If you would open up your, the, well, let me explain first the request. This sort of came in two phases. I liken this to design. You know, you create what you think is a really workable design. We had the architects, as you know, come up with a new solution, looked great. We had the budget and the realization that we were falling short of the budget, or rather, falling short of funding to pay for the entire project as designed. So we've looked at numerous ways to sort of skin that cat. And the last time we met, we talked about trying to get the number below a half million dollars that we would ask the county for. And so in looking at that, and that's where my recommendation on the cooling tower came, I thought, well, if we could save that money right now and put it towards the gymnasium, it would certainly show the county commissioners that we're pretty serious about this project. And so that's what the first part of this recommendation was. But the more I looked at the numbers, and I looked at the overall dollars available to us through QSCB, I found that quite conveniently, adding up a certain amount of money from projects that were in a hold status allowed us to zero out the dollars. And so I'm going to take you to what I call the alternate budget number. And it shows that we have in our construction of funds for the Northwest Cabarrus High Gym addition, $1,497,220. And that includes the money from the, excuse me, the front entrance that we decided some time ago we weren't going to do. The next thing was, I started to look at all the projects below the line that we sort of said were on hold, and I thought, well, let's just take a look at this. And so I added in all of the money, not just a portion of the money from the practice fields from Bogart, but all of them. And that's represented by the $540,400. And we had already talked about and committed the idea of using the Beverly Hills Chiller and Controls Replacement Project monies at $305,956. We have approximately $70,500 remaining in the design fee for the original gym work that we can put towards the project. As you can see, that's, the next item is the $50,000 in the cooling tower work that I'm suggesting we not do and use that money towards this project. I then brought in the vocational building remodeling monies at $133,500. And the Mount Pleasant High School boiler replacement work at $56,470. I just want to bring to everyone's attention that the total of $2,654,046 does not include the Weinkoff Technology Project, and it's still our hope that we can do that project as part of the QSCB work. As you go down the page, we then look at the costs, and you've seen these numbers before. These were proposed by the architect and by my office, of the estimated construction costs of 2 million, excuse me, $200,000, a contingency cost of $190,000, a design fee of $220,000, and an admin fee of $44,000. So we have an anticipated project cost of $2,654,000. So doing the math, I just liked zero better than $46, but in reality, we're $46 to the good using those economics. And I felt, I just wanted to present that to you to show you that it could be done if we so, if you all decided you wanted to do this, it's possible for us to complete that project as designed without additional funding from the county. It means giving up projects, and I don't deny that. It was my hope that we would somehow pull off the QSCB II funding and reinsert some of those projects back in, and certainly, we will do that as part of our request that goes forward. But at least at this point in time, if you all are in agreement that this project needs to get completed, we can do it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wiki. And by us approving earlier to do the resolution to the commissioners, and by Ms. Furtinbaugh's addition to the motion there, we'll be throwing these items that we are not able to do, we're taking funding away from. That should cover that right up front. So with that being said, I'd like to give the board opportunity to ask you questions or discuss this, and we'll start on Ms. Monnet's side.
Just have a question about your bottom line there. You have a project cost of $2,606,000 and a current funding of $2,602,000.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't make that correction. You're absolutely correct. My math is even worse than I thought. But the.
That's just a clerical.
It's a clerical error on my part, I'm sorry.
I thought that was one of my kinds of errors.
Right, no. The number up above is the correct number of $2,654,000 for the cost, so.
Well, that was easy enough. Ms. Carpenter, you have your comments.
Well, I think we're all in agreement that there's a safety factor there at the gym currently. There's a promise that has been made for years and years, and they can't play in the gym the way it is right now. And I think that, I mean, we would like to have done the fields, but I think the gym is a priority, and I think a lot of us feel that way, that the gym is the priority over the fields right now. And so we need to go on with the project. It's not going to get any cheaper, it's going to get more expensive.
That's correct.
And I think that we need to go ahead and do that for the safety, so they can utilize what they've got and to go ahead and go with it. And to do it, because it's not going to get less expensive, it's just going to get more expensive, and it's going to cost the taxpayers more money. So we need to go ahead and get it completed, and we found a way now that we can do it without having to go and ask for more money, and so I think we need to go ahead and complete it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Kiger, you want to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, at the risk of feeling a little bit like a bull stampeding ahead, you know, we've talked about this quite a bit, and one of the things you don't want to have is tunnel vision. You know, we've been so focused on making sure we do this, and we've tried to massage the design, the budget, everything to make sure that we get this done, and maybe it's just my nature, but all of a sudden, now I'm feeling like, well, wait a minute, are we doing too much to try to make sure we get this one thing done? But, you know, again, it still stands that the four reasons we talked about are four legitimate reasons. And just as a point of clarification, Ms. Carpenter, they can play in the gym, what they can't do is run. play in the gym, what they can't do is wrestle in the gym, so.
That's not playing everything.
Well, right, but I mean, playing the gym makes it sound like it's, it's under lock and key, and it, it, it's just the, the wrestling piece that they, they can't do. But the, the numbers, I'm okay with, with, with what your numbers are. The only question, I guess I have, and I apologize, I didn't catch this to ask you prior to this, but on the previous tab under nine point two, it looks like there's a twenty thousand, eight eighty number that we were below the project's approved construction budget, but that number's not on the next, so is it rolled into some other number, and I just don't know which one it is?
You're referring to the monies that's left over in the HVAC projects?
Yeah.
That's going to be, remain, remain as contingency for those projects?
Okay.
We don't have any other.
Okay, and that's fine, because, and that's fine. I'm, I guess, just to use a technical term here, smidge, I'm a smidge concerned that we, we've lowered the contingency when you do renovation work. You know, that, that makes me nervous. Ten percent is about a normal number for a renovation work, especially when we're talking about taking a sixty-year-old building and, and working with the structural load to hold the floor up, but forty-five? Well, it, okay, it's pushing sixty. No, but it's all, but you're right, thanks. But, you know, again, if, if that's, to give a little, to get a little, I, I'm willing to give up a little of that contingency to help zero out the, the numbers, and so, I'm okay with that. I think that's, based on the climate of what we've been hearing with the, with the commissioners, trying to figure out how to do it on our own is probably the only way it's going to happen. So, we, I applaud you for your, your effort and diligence and, and the architect team of trying to get us there, and I'm okay with, with where we're headed, and just have to be wary of tunnel vision.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Kiger. I just wanted to say, to get the numbers to work out, had I done the math correctly, I, I was required to drop the, the contingency. The architect's not comfortable, you know, I can't say that he'd get my vote on that one, but I, I did indicate that we're going to work with him and do whatever we can. There is a structural issue at the northeast side of the, yeah, northeast side of the corner of the building, and I said, you know, if, if we need to use operating funds and, you know, our facilities monies to look at that, we may have to do that, because that's certainly not part and participle to this project, it's something that's been going on at that building for a long time. So, I, I don't want to start pulling in other things from, from the building that don't belong to this project. So, we'll have to address that issue as it needs to be addressed in the future, and focus on the gym with these monies.
Okay, Ms. Blackwelder?
I am.
Okay, Ms. Furtinbaugh?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I have one question for Mr. Wickie, although I'm, there's part of me that's sad, there's part of me that is happy to get to closure on at least one of these projects of that school. The fields design, was that left in any previous money, or is that completely gone now?
No, it, it's, I don't know if you're complete yet, Todd, on the field design. I know you've been working on it, but.
Yeah, no, we haven't, we haven't completed it.
No.
But I mean, but that money?
Oh, yeah, the money's still there.
Okay, because previous to the meeting, Mr. Wickie and I talked outside here, and he indicated that there were some perhaps community-type organizations who might be able to participate in, as special projects for that group, participate in, uh, working on the fields, but the design is required. We would have to provide design and provide some of the materials, they would do the labor and the dirt and that sort of thing, so I just wanted to make sure the design was covered. So, with that said, I can support this, and I thank our wonderful architects for wearing the colors of the Northwest Cabarrus High School Trojans tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Furtinbaugh. Mr. Fur?
Well, last week, I think I pretty much said you would find a way to do it, and you did, so I'm happy.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, board members, now, you remember, we voted last week, you know, to send a formal letter to the commissioners asking for five hundred thousand dollars. Now, I need to ask from our legal here, now, what happens to that motion now? Because we're going to do something here on this one here now. Where do we stand on that? Does that become null and void, or do we just replace it with this one?
It would seem to me that it would be, it would be moot now. If, if you approve this proposal to find this other funds, you no longer need that five hundred thousand dollars for this project, so I, unless the board wishes to do otherwise, I would think that it would not be logical now to send that letter.
It dies on the line?
Yes, I, I think it would be, it would basically be supplanted by the newer recommendation. If you want, I get, procedurally, the ideal way would be to, as part of this, if you want to rescind that motion, that's, that would probably be the cleanest for the minutes if, and I guess that's what I would suggest as your parliamentarian, since you voted on that last week.
I think that would be the way I would go with it.
I think a motion to rescind and then a motion to adopt this would make sense.
Okay, all right. And can that all be done in one motion there, Mr. Don Rickie, or do we need to do two separate ones?
You could do it as one if you wanted. You could vote to rescind the request for five hundred dollars and to approve the addition funded in the manner presented by Mr. Wickie.
Okay, well, that sounds like something that we ought to do, then. Ms. Furtinbaugh, I know your thinking cap's on down there, so do you want to make this motion to rescind the former motion, and we'll get that out of the way, replacing it with the alternate budget for consideration here?
Mr. Chairman, what are you going to do when I'm not here to make alternate motions?
Well, just like Mr. Fur says, we'll find a way. We'll find a way.
Mr. Kiger's taking notes.
Oh, is he? Okay.
We'll, we'll keep you on speed dial.
Okay, Ms. Furtinbaugh.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we rescind our previous request to the county commissioners for additional funding for the Northwest Cabarrus High School Gym, because we are now, have been presented with the alternate gymnasium proposal and funding path, and recommend that we approve that as presented by Mr. Wickie.
I'll second that.
Okay, you did a good job on that, Ms. Furtinbaugh, and she made the motion, and Ms. Carpenter made the, she seconded it, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion carries, seven oh, so, Mr. Wickie, you got your job there, ready to cut out on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, board members, let's see, we want to move right on now to the, to another, to another item here, that I, I guess I'm going to be doing this, and this is another item that's concerning monies, and where the, the board, we would like to submit a resolution to the Department of Public Instruction, the, asking them to cut out the discretionary reversions. As you know, we've lost a lot of money over the years to reversions, so I'm going to read the resolution to you, and then we'll move forward with a, with a motion and a vote on this to move it on forward. The resolution reads, whereas the discretionary reversion has been in effect for four years, which camouflages the actual amount received by school districts, and whereas the Cabarrus County School District had to revert eight million, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars to the state of North Carolina in two thousand and eleven, twelve, and whereas the Cabarrus County School System had to use five million, six hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-one of edu job funds in its two thousand and eleven, twelve budget, and whereas the Cabarrus County Board of Education and Superintendent have had to make extreme cuts in both personnel and essential program services due to the extensive budget cuts since two thousand and eight. Therefore, be it resolved that, the Cabarrus County Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools respectfully request that the legislature for the state of North Carolina eliminate the discretionary reversion for the betterment of public education for all school systems in North Carolina. The elimination of the reversion would allow us to offset the loss of the edu job funds at the end of this fiscal year and would put an end to discretionary reversions in North Carolina, and this would be approved by the Cabarrus County Board of Education this twelfth day of March, two thousand and twelve, signed by Dr. Barry Shepherd, Superintendent, Linschew, Chairman of the Board of Education. Board members, you've had this since last week. Do we have any comments or any questions about this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I just respectfully would ask of Ms. Clutz, last week, when you gave the description of what a discretionary reversion to the state was, I had several phone calls that said they had never heard that ever and did not understand. You know, we understand what this means to us and our system, but a lot of the general public doesn't. So, just for the viewing audience, if the board would appreciate you getting up and telling the general public what a discretionary reversion is and how it impacts our school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blackwelder, and I'm sure Ms. Clutz will be glad to do that for the viewing audience. Thank you, Ms. Clutz.
Absolutely. We want everyone to understand the impact that it, it causes for school systems. For Cabarrus County Schools, we get approximately a hundred and forty million dollars from the state, and immediately, this past year, we were asked to give eight point four million dollars back to the state, and since two thousand and eight, that has increased from approximately one and a half million dollars to eight point four million dollars, and next year, it's expected to be nine point nine million dollars for Cabarrus County Schools. And we get to make the, the choice on how we return that money back to the state. The state doesn't tell us you need to reduce teachers or teacher assistants, or you need to cut supplies. You, as a local board, make that decision, so that's where it's really painful. You get to look the people in the eye and say, it's your job or your job. So, we make decisions locally, and we return that money. We have about thirty days to do that, so they give, give you all of your money upfront, a hundred and forty million dollars, and then you return it immediately, eight point four million dollars back to the state. We've done that for many years.
Kelly, the question was, what, why did they do that? Do you have an, just a good idea of what that reason is? Why do we get that much money, then, why do we have to return it? That doesn't make sense to the general public. Well, why do they give it to you to begin with, if it's not your fault that you have to turn it back? Is it something we've done? Is it something they've overpaid us for? Can you give an idea of why that actually takes place?
It's so that you, as a local board, can make that decision, and the state doesn't have to make that decision as, for us, for the state. It's, we've been told that we get to make a, it's a discretionary reversion, it's also a discretionary decision, so that we get the flexibility to make the decision, but it's also, you can look at it positively or negatively. If they tell us how to make the decision, we get the responsibility of making that decision also. So, we, we make the decision that impacts teachers, or we make the decision that impacts teacher assistants, but if the state tells us across the state level, you make the decision to cut class size, then, then the, the state has told us, cut class size or, or cut teacher assistants, and we don't, we don't make that decision, but you, as a local board, get to make that decision. So, we're making decisions differently across our systems in the state.
And once again, you call that passing the buck. We're taking the heat for it.
Yes, sir, you can say that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Clutz, for your explanation of that. So, board members, with all the comments and all the things that we've said here, do I have a motion that we accept this resolution as presented?
No moves.
Have motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, motion carries, and we'll get the resolution ready to send off to the legislation, they can deal with it, and I'm sure they'll be glad to get our letter as well as many others, I'm hoping. Well, board members, it's time for us to end our meeting this evening, and we'll be going into closed session pursuant to General Statute one forty-three point three eighteen point eleven A six, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual, public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual, public officer or employee, and pursuant to General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven A three, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privileges hereby acknowledged, and to discuss Newsome versus Cabarrus County Board of Education. All right, do we have a motion that we convene in closed session?
No moves.